We're gonna call the meeting to order at this time. Now, I have, okay, we, obviously, we're doing a, a virtual meeting this evening, so there are some special rules on how we want to conduct that going forward to be effective. But I guess my question starts off with, I don't see any of our pictures yet on the screen. We won't, we won't have our pictures? But we won't see ourselves, the people will see us. Okay, we'll go with that, fine. And with that, um, good evening, everyone who's, who's joining us tonight. We thank you very much for working with us through these trying times as we conduct the, what we call a virtual meeting here at the Village of Royal Palm Beach. It is Thursday night, it is six thirty, and it is, uh, believe it or not, May twenty first already. So, we, we go forward and time goes forward even faster. So with that, I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance. All right, Diane, please let the record show that tonight we have, uh, all members of council physically present, with the exception of Councilwoman Samuel, who is participating remotely. Are you out there, Selena? Do we have Selena up on the, on, on the call yet? I thought we had her on already, no? Selena, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. All right, so we're gonna work on that.
Oh, I am here, Mayor, sorry about that.
Okay, that's okay, good. So you can hear us, okay?
Yes, and a great video too on Facebook.
Really? Okay, all right, so let the record show all, all members of council are present. Okay, uh, some announcements I'd like to make, and as I said, some special ground rules, um, that we're operating under. And I thought we were gonna mention the statute. Keith, are you there? Can you hear me? I can't hear you, you're muted. Now you're unmuted.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
I can hear you now, yeah. I thought we were gonna, we don't have to mention the statute that we're operating under, the emergency statute that allows us to have a virtual meeting?
It's Executive Order of twenty one, uh, sixty-nine, which was extended by Order one twelve, which was further extended by Order one fourteen.
Okay.
Uh, and those executive orders continue to, um, suspend the physical presence for purposes of establishing a quorum requirement and allow the use of communication media technology to constitute a quorum and proceed in the fashion that we are proceeding, uh, under the current statewide declarations.
All right, good, I just wanted to make sure we had that information read into the record. Okay, Diane, we're good? All right, um, the other part of this I want to address is how we've handled or will be handling public comment. Now, we did open up, uh, for receiving public comment in advance, and that window was open until five P M. yesterday. And, uh, I got a report, I believe, from the clerk that we did not receive any public comment prior to the meeting?
That's correct, Mayor, no public comment.
No public comment prior to the meeting, okay. However, during this meeting, if anyone from the public would like to make a public comment, you may do so. And to do that, you need to go to, uh, use GoToMeeting and use the chat function on GoToMeeting. And please include in the chat your name, your address, and the agenda item number that you are looking to comment on. If it's a non-agenda item, just indicate so. And, um, we will then pick that up, that chat, and then acknowledge you and give, have an opportunity for you to make public comment. Does anyone have any questions on that? No? Okay, good. Um, all participants in coun, and I'm asking all everyone participating, our council members, our staff, and anyone making a public comment, please remember when you're not speaking, please mute your phone or your computer so that we don't get background noise in, uh, into the proceedings. And when you do speak, please speak clearly and, and, and as loudly as, as practical so that we can hear everything. And the, the whole point here is we wanna make sure we capture everything properly in our record of the meeting. So if there are no questions other than that, I will move forward with the agenda. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is our presentation of the one thousand dollar scholarship awards to ten Royal Palm Beach graduating seniors. I'm gonna ask our, the Vice Mayor, Mara, who's our liaison for the Education Advisory Committee, to, uh, proceed with this recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, good evening, everyone. As everyone knows, the village scholarships are awarded to graduating seniors who reside in Royal Palm Beach, who have maintained a minimum three point oh GPA and have been actively engaged in both their schools and also in their community. Uh, this is one of the village's education advisory board, um, functions to actually interview and select, uh, ten recipients for this scholarship, which, as the mayor mentioned, are one thousand dollar scholarships. And, uh, and this, of course, is, is one of the, one of the primary functions of our E A B., but it's also one of our most enjoyable ones. Uh, and I wanna thank the members for doing such a great job that they've done again this year. Uh, before going on, I think it's appropriate to address the elephant in the room, as they say. Probably an understatement to say that, uh, this graduating class is gonna experience a graduation that is gonna be different from any others, any others that I've seen, and hopefully any others that, uh, we will see in the future. You might say, despite that, um, and maybe even because of that, uh, we want them to, to know that we, we truly honor and appreciate this major accomplishment in their life. And, uh, we wanna make sure that they know that, and they deserve nothing less. So in that spirit, as council liaison to the Education Advisory Board, I have the honor of presenting the names of the Village of Royal Palm Beach Scholarship Recipients for the Class of two thousand and twenty. Uh, hopefully, everybody's been able to join us online, all of the recipients, uh, so that each awardee, uh, is attending remotely and also will see their names and their faces and their schools appear, uh, as I mentioned them. Uh, I see we have a first village scholarship recipient picture up already. That is Allison Aliannick, and she is graduating from Cardinal Newman High School. The next recipient is Dylan Valkaran, who is graduating from Royal Palm Beach High School. Our next scholarship recipient is Sebastian Fernandez. Whoop, I'm sorry. But we can do it that way. Sebastian Fernandez, uh, who is graduating from Dreyfus School of the Arts. The next scholarship recipient is Chloe Calderon, graduating from Royal Palm Beach High School. Our next scholarship awardee is Paige Houck, who is graduating from Royal Palm Beach High School. Next is Savannah Ayman, graduating from Seminole Ridge High School, enthusiastically, obviously. Next scholarship recipient is Paige Kerschfield, who is also graduating from Seminole Ridge High School. Our next recipient is Jaden Manuel, graduating from Royal Palm Beach High School. Our next scholarship awardee is Congella Mullings, graduating from Suncoast High School. And our final village scholarship recipient for the Class of two thousand and twenty is Olivia Sordelay, who is graduating from Royal Palm Beach High School. Congratulations to each and every one of these outstanding young men and women. We know, we wish you nothing but the very best in the future, and we want you to know that the Village of Royal Palm Beach is very proud of each one of you. Congratulations.
Absolutely, congratulations, and I'm sure, uh, as the years, years from now, there'll be a lot of stories told about the graduation, the two thousand and twenty graduation class and what they experienced. Diane, uh, do you know when the checks were sent out?
Yes, they were sent out last Friday.
Last, the fifteenth? So the checks were released, uh, in the mail on the fifteenth, so, um, hopefully by now, maybe you've received them. Once again, congratulations, and continue to excel. Thank you, and thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, we also tonight have a proclamation. Oops, proclamation for National Public Works Week. And it reads, whereas public works service provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding of informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems, programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this, of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality of effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Therefore, on this day, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, the Village of Royal Palm Beach does hereby complain, proclaim the week of March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, as National Public Works Week. And the Village of Royal Palm Beach, and call upon all citizens, 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 citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed and sealed this twenty-first day of May, two thousand and twenty. Now, we're not gonna physically present it, but it will get presented to Paul and his team?
Yes.
Okay. It's interesting, um, public works and the services they provide is something that we typically take for granted until something goes wrong and things are all over the place, and then we, then we, then we say, where are the public works folks? No, so we appreciate that, and, and we duly recognize them this week. All right, we're gonna go into reports. And I'd like to take a moment, uh, to report on something that, unfortunately, we will hit with every day right now during this pandemic, um, with this news every day we get reported to us, the number of fatalities that have occurred in the United States. So I wanted just to take this moment tonight, just to, to pause for a moment and, and acknowledge that there are ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-six, as of now, families out there across this country who are in very much pain and who are very much suffering because they've lost someone who they love in their family to this dreaded disease. So I'd like us to take a moment of silence, I'd like us to stand and have a moment of silence and reverence and recognition and acknowledgement of their loss. Thank you. Unfortunately, we're not out of this yet, and it's unfortunate, believe, uh, this number may continue to go up. But we should always just keep in mind, although we are all, have been maybe displaced and, and, uh, maybe have felt shut in and not able to do all the things that we normally would do, um, our health and the health of our family members and our friends is the most important thing. So we need to think about those who, who weren't as fortunate and have, right now, who are grieving the loss of someone. Thank you. With that, Selena, we're gonna start with you in terms of reports.
Okay, perfect, good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, thank you very much to Feeding House Florida. We went, uh, they're doing the food distribution for us. They've been doing it, and they will continue to do it all through June. So a Commons Park on Wednesdays from nine A M. to eleven A M. I attended the Discover the Palm Beaches, had a tourism update and future economic recovery roundtable. So they, this was a couple weeks ago, but they made some predictions as far as leisure recovery. And the first thing that, uh, the, the people who were polled had said is for trips, that they wanted to go to the beaches. Thirty-eight percent said that. And then the number two, which is thirty percent, said small towns or rural areas. But I found that interesting considering that that's where people plan their, their first trips. The first activities they talked about were dining out, forty percent, hanging out with friends, thirty-nine percent, grooming, thirty-seven percent, and shopping, thirty-five percent. So we can see over the last week or so how that has, uh, come to fruition. And then they anticipated that travel likely will, um, start back up again in September, and they predicted that thirty-one percent would be with, for leisure, and twenty-one percent for business. So it's interesting to see just how times change and, uh, businesses are being conducted differently. Uh, thank you very much to U S Sugar for, they did a free corn distribution as well over Commons Park. And thank you especially to all of our staff, who they've been adapting with these changing times that we've had, and they've been really accommodating with all the staff, so thank you very much.
Okay, does that complete your report?
It does, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Selena.
Um, the only report I have seeing is how I've been cooped up at home with my children would be to, uh, say thank you to the, to the school district and the schools. Uh, all three of my children have been at home doing the distance learning thing, and everyone's learning together, and I appreciate the effort the school district, uh, has really put into it. I have a child at Royal Palm High, at Crestwood Middle, and at the Western Academy Charter School, and they have really gone above and beyond to keep the kids involved and active and at least things workable because I was a little concerned at the beginning of this, but I, I, I think from my perspective as a parent, they've really done an excellent job. I hope in the fall it's gone, um, but that's just hope. I, I'd just like to say thanks for that, and thanks for all of our, as, uh, the mayor mentioned early, publics, works, and employees who come to work every day and keep on the job to keep our village great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, speaking of drive-throughs, uh, I under, I understand that Royal Palm Beach High School had a drive-through, uh, scheduled for each one of their seniors, uh, to drive through and, um, and be congratulated by the principal. In fact, they're, they're run, running a, uh, a ceremony right now, uh, virtually, uh, for their stalls and their scholarships. Uh, and so this took place to allow them to pick up their caps and gowns, uh, pick up their ropes, uh, to pick up, um, their T-shirts and all of the other things that they would have otherwise had had there's been a more normal kind of a graduation. And I, I can tell you that, um, while I really didn't know firsthand about Royal Palm Beach High School, uh, experience, I can tell you from my granddaughter's Gardens High School experience, um, maybe not the same, but still impactful and very meaningful and very much appreciated. So thank you, uh, to Principal Armus, to the school district, to all of the teachers and the staff over at Royal Palm Beach High School for doing what they can, uh, to, um, to make this as special a time as it should be for, for each one of these, uh, graduating seniors. I did wanna mention, though, while I'm on drive-throughs, um, that, um, the, uh, the, the lines don't, haven't gotten any shorter in the five weeks that we've been doing this, uh, which, which is interesting in and of itself. I, I would say that, um, we have collectively gotten more efficient and a, and a better team going, and we're involving a lot of interesting, uh, groups. Everybody from individual Royal Palm Beach residents who are looking for a way to kinda help out during these times, to, um, uh, groups like, um, our Palm West Charter School has been at every one of these, uh, and, uh, half a dozen or so of the, of the staff and the principal. And then, um, Ro, Royal Palm Beach Rotary has been there. But then there's a small army from Christ Fellowship that shows up, and, uh, they're well organized and, and, um, they are a huge help, they, they really are. So thank you to all of the volunteers, and thank you again, as, as, uh, Councilwoman Samuel said, uh, to, uh, to Lou and, and Mike and to the entire staff for doing a great job. Um, since it involves over seven hundred cars, we couldn't have done it without P B S O. Um, I, I, I would say that the good captain here would probably pulled out some of that hair that he's missing right now as a result of some of those early show-ups, uh, at, uh, Commons Park. But it's, but it's been a really, really good event, and, um, thank you to everybody for doing that.
Yeah, I, I just wanna add to your point, it has been an outstanding event, and, and many, many, many people have come from the area, um, who needed that support and help, so it, it, it's something that's, it's good to see. Did I conclude your?
Yes, it does.
Good evening, everyone. Um, yes, it's great to see a community come together like that, um, so kudos all around, as my colleagues have already said. And another thank you to Maria Landrum, who is our census intern. And she's done a fantastic job in, um, getting our numbers up to, for folks to respond to the census. Um, I heard we were first in the state last week. Um, where are we now, Ray, and how can people who haven't completed their census still do that?
Okay, let me call Maria, no. You know, I, when you say first in the state, it was, it's, it, we're way up there, um, but it, they kinda break it down to size of city too, so there might be some smaller cities that, and other cities that have, have done as well or better. Uh, but she has done an excellent job. She was very, very disappointed when kind of everything she had planned had been put on, was changed because of COVID-nineteen. Uh, but she, she reprogrammed, she, she did what she needed to do, she could coordinate, still continue to coordinate with the schools. She'll, very active on Facebook, and, and, and she did it. I mean, she was, she was determined to get that as high as possible, and she was the highest in the county for cities our size, and, uh, one of the highest reporting in the country, so it's, it's way up there in the upper percentiles, and she did an awesome job. So, and, and, and she, she really appreciated, uh, getting the opportunity to do the internship. You know, she did say it was one of the best, the, what was the best internship she's ever done. Uh, she liked the freedom, she liked the independence, and, and, and she did what she needed to do for us, so. Greatly appreciated.
She really got tested with this emergency that came out of nowhere and put her in a different situation, and, and, uh, so hopefully, I, I would think she, she grew out of this process.
Oh, she's going places, we're gonna hear her name.
Good, that's good. Maybe, maybe she'll be back, who else?
One, just one other, and this came from a resident this afternoon. I received a phone call about the, um, the paving that's being done on metal arc as a result of the water main break. Can you address that?
You wanna get an update on it, or?
I, I, I was being, um, questioned by a resident, and I wasn't sure where we were with the details.
I got a note on that too, and asked the manager to look into that, I don't know if he had a chance to.
I, I did look into, I don't have all the answers, uh, I have most of them. The, the complaint was they were only paving half the road.
Right.
And, and that is a correct statement on, on most of metal arc, not all of it, and not sandpipers. Sandpipers being done from edge to edge because of where the location of the line was, and there's some other areas in metal arc that goes edge to edge where there were crossings and things like that. But in the majority of metal arc, uh, we did only, only require they do it to the middle of the road. That's all they were willing to do. They actually, their trench was actually much smaller than that, so what we did is we required that they go to the middle of the road, uh, so that over, in about six months to a year, they'll look the same, you won't tell the difference. Um, the answer that I don't have is, and, and the other, and the reason for not including it in there, paving the other section, was it wasn't up on our resurfacing program yet, and the county's contractor was at least double, maybe three times what our contract was for Crestwood. So it wasn't, it wouldn't have been a good idea for us to do it because we could do it much cheaper with our own resurfacing program. So the answer I don't have for you is when it's scheduled to be resurfaced. Um, that's the only thing I don't have. It's not, I think it's within five years, but I'm not positive on that. But it will not be noticeable within, within probably less than a year.
Thank you.
Uh, just to be clear, the, the work that's being done is work done by the county for the pipes, the, the water, uh, county's water utility? Or is it something other than that?
No, it's, it is just a replacement of the water line. We had several breaks on that roadway over the years.
Okay.
And, um, that required patching of the road and, and quite an inconvenience to the cut, to the residents, and so they replaced the entire line.
All right, so they should not have the same problems they've had in the past with water?
That is correct.
Pipe breaking, okay. Good. That's cool, Derek. Okay. Do you have anything you wanna report?
No, I have no report, Mayor, thank you.
Keith, you're up.
Um, no report, I, I, unless you have any questions, um, I, I would, uh, take a quick second to congratulate Vice Mayor Hamara, and, uh, including his term as President of the League of Cities. On Wednesday, he'll be handing over those reins to Kim Blast Castro. Uh, and although there won't be a gala, uh, as normal, it'll be a conference call, uh, the swearing-in of the new, uh, slate of officers will never go up to her, uh, next Wednesday.
Okay, thanks, 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 thanks. Thanks for that update, but it goes to show you how, once again, things that we normally, you know, we take to granted, that transition every year and that big gala, and we're not gonna be able to do that this year, no?
Not at all.
Wow.
And actually, somebody, somebody, uh, mentioned that earlier today, and I said, yeah, I kinda feel like a graduating senior. But, uh, yeah, not, not quite, not quite that disappointed, but it is interesting, we'll, we'll get on with life.
We'll still have to move forward, we still have to persevere, that's true.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chris Marsh, uh, said he can add to, he probably has the answer to that resurfacing thing. He said he can add to that if we can, uh...
Can we get him in?
Get him unmuted and let him answer that question, Chris.
Chris, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Hey, C M., that's what we see, I see C M. here, go ahead.
He's unmuted, go ahead.
Uh, can, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Uh, the issue with, with metal arc is, it, it is asked for resurfacing in, for certain sections in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, when the county came to us, it, it was a bit of an emergency project because of the water main was, was, uh, breaking in sections and, and obviously causing outages and significant issues. Uh, so what, what we decided to do is to wait till two thousand and twenty-two so we could properly evaluate the, the road. It also has some underlying, underlying structural issues, even in the, in the sections that they're redoing refining, uh, it's very thick sections of, of asphalt and then thin sections of asphalt. So we, we wanna properly evaluate that section of roadway, and when we do resurface, uh, we wanna make sure that it's done correctly.
Okay, that's good news, that's, that's good information.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Diane, you got that? Okay, good, thanks, Chris. Okay, so I think we're concluded with, uh, anything else, Keith, are you done?
I'll finish, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure. Um, all right, so that concludes, uh, our reports. At this time, if there's anyone who has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time to do that. I don't see anyone here who would be looking to do that, so we're closed acceptance of petitions. Um, also, at this time, we usually will, uh, address, uh, anyone who wanted to make comments on items not on the, on the, uh, agenda or items on a consent agenda. So with that, I'll ask Diane, do we have any chat?
No comments from the public.
No comments from the public? Okay, therefore, I'm gonna close public comments on non-agenda items and items on the consent agenda. And with that, Diane, can you give us the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes for the council organization meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, council regular meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, and council regular meeting of April second, two thousand and twenty. Two, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a traffic control jurisdiction agreement between Shoma at Royal Palm Beach condo association and the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Three, adoption resolution two thousand and oh six. Three, adoption resolution 2006, the resolution of the village council of the village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving an application to the transportation alternatives grant program through the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency for the installation and modification of curb ramps and sidewalk connections in the La Mancha and Saratoga Pond subdivisions to meet current ADA standards and committing to fund ongoing operations and maintenance through the useful life of the project. Authorizing the mayor or village manager to execute all necessary documents, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Four, approval and adoption of resolution number 2009, a resolution of the village council of the village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute amendment 001 to the interlocal cooperation agreement with Palm Beach County concerning the village's participation in the urban county program related to the administration of funds from the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships Program during federal fiscal years 2021 through 2023, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay. If there are any questions or comments from members on council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said, Selena.
Oh, go ahead. I was gonna make a motion, but if Councilman Valencis is, I'll just second it.
So you second the motion?
Correct.
All right, so so Councilman?
I made the motion.
Okay, so we're okay, we're good. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the consent agenda was accepted 5-0. All right, moving to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda, R1, is a public hearing to consider variance application 20-22, an application by Diane Cosgrove on variance order VC 20-3. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 26-79 to allow for a reduced rear setback of 15 feet where village code requires 20 feet, a variance of 5 feet in order to construct an addition for a property located at 121 Cypress Crescent. This is a quasi judicial process, so we would like to have anyone who wants to participate be sworn in. Keith, how do we do that?
I I can do that. I can actually see Ms. Cosgrove. Can you hear me, Ms. Cosgrove?
Perfectly, yes.
All right, I'm gonna place you under oath so that you're you can testify on your application. I'll have to raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Is Bradford O'Brien on? For the village? Bradford, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes, Keith, I can hear you. There we go, I got you. Let me go ahead and swear you in as well, Bradford. And swear affirm under penalties of perjury your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes. Okay, and then I just need to back to council, ask all council members if you've had any ex parte discussions regarding this matter, those who need to be disclosed at this time.
None?
No.
No.
Hearing none, Mayor, then you can proceed with this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. All right, Bradford, I'm gonna turn it over to you at this point.
Yes, sir. Okay, good evening. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 2679 to allow for a reduced rear yard setback of 15 feet for the principal structure in lieu of the 20-foot rear yard setback requirement resulting in a variance of 5 feet. The applicant would like to construct an addition to the existing house and will be even with the existing screen enclosure. The applicant asserts that the addition is for a nursery with a bathroom and closet. The applicant contends that the variance request is necessary to accommodate their growing family and will allow them to stay in their current home and not have to move from their neighborhood that they love. It is the applicant's position that the requested variance is the minimum variance which will allow reasonable use of the property and that the variance will not confer on the applicant's special privileges. Village Code allows, Village Council will grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A little interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. But the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land and will be harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division. The village sent out the required mail out notice to all residents within 300 feet of radius of the subject property. It would find the property owners of the variance request. The village has not received any responses to these letters. However, the applicant did provide two letters of support from the adjoining neighbors supporting the variance request. Staff is not in support of this variance. Staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. Condition is a result from actions of the applicant. It will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. Staff, again, has recommended denial of application 2022, variance order VC 20-3. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the screen back over to you.
I just have a question. Maybe you said it and I didn't quite hear it. Do we have any information from from the surrounding neighbors?
Yes, sir. We received, the applicant has two properties that are directly adjacent to her property or their property, and she's received letters from both of those property owners stating that they have no objection to this variance request.
Okay, thank you, Bradford. Would the applicant like to make some comments at this time? Ms. Cosgrove? Yes, would you like to make comments?
Uh, no, I just hope that, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay. So everything that was presented was accurately presented? There's nothing you wanted to add to this? Just, okay.
Um.
I'm sure.
He said most everything that I would have. I really love where I live. My neighbors are fantastic. We're like a small little family, which is really hard to find. I've lived in two different houses. Um, I have two small children, and we love our neighborhood. We have lots of kids around us. And this would allow for me to stay put and stay here and raise my kids. I grew up literally three miles away from here. So I love it here. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, have we received any requests for comments on agenda item R1?
No, Mayor, no comments have been submitted from the public.
Okay, since no comments have been submitted, at this time, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R1 and open up for comments from members on council.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So looking looking at the the graphic that that shows the lot as it currently exists, it it appears there's a screen-in patio around a pool that is even closer to the property line than 15 feet. And when I combine that with the letters from the two adjacent property owners, while I recognize this is a variance, I'm more in favor of it than I am opposed to it at this point.
All right, any other likes? No? All right. I I'm inclined to agree with your comments, Vice Mayor. The the layout as this house is laid out and with the congruence of how it aligns with the swimming pool fencing area, it it doesn't seem like it creates a an out of order kind of a situation to accommodate this requirement. So if there are no further comments, I think I'd look for a recommendation of approval. If there's a, if there's a.
Make a motion to approve resolution 20-09.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You said aye, Selena? I didn't hear you.
Yes, it was.
Okay. All right, we have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R1 was approved 5-0.
Yes, Mayor.
Good luck, Ms. Cosgrove, and hopefully everything works out for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, agenda item R2 is the presentation of our Palm Beach County Sheriff's District 9 annual report from our very own Captain Nick Nance. Sir, you're up.
For allowing me?
You guys do, you guys start over now. No, I'm joking.
I will.
You don't have to.
I'd like to take a moment to thank you all very much for allowing me the honor and opportunity to present the District 9 2019 annual report to you, the leaders of our village, as well as the the other members of department heads that are here and those of our community. As always, the hardworking men and women of District 9 strive to ensure the safety of the residents and visitors and business owners in the villages of Royal Palm Beach. And I thank you for the opportunity to present their hard work. Our community events. District 9 participates in numerous community events throughout the year, quite often partnering with the village of Royal Palm Beach. For example, we have attended crime watch and crime prevention meetings throughout the village, participated in the annual food drive where 900 turkeys and over 20,000 food items were collected as we again partner with the village, 16 area schools, and local businesses to feed those in need in our community. We continue to hold meetings with school principals and clarity and continue to attend HOA and COP meetings throughout the village to ensure we continue to communicate with our partners. Our Citizen Observer Patrol. Throughout 2019, District 9 COP volunteers provided 6,091 volunteer hours to operations within District 9. The value of this patrol, if calculated at minimum wage, equals $154,138. These hours include 58,420 patrol miles, 1,461 park patrols, 147,242 business checks, assistance in 16 motor vehicle crash scenes, aid to 10 disabled motorists, the issuance of 188 handicap parking citations, and 64 parking warning citations. Our Police Athletic League, our PAL program. PAL Boxing is our free recreational program available five days a week to boys and girls ages 11 to 17. In addition to boxing and physical training, the program offers mentoring as well as homework assistance to those who need it. We had 128 active individual participants in the PAL gym in 2019 with a total of 2,208 visits. As in years past, we continue to actively promote and recruit for this program. In 2019, PAL boxers participated in Box Fit in Okatobi County on three different occasions, the Pete Palasunus Invitational, the 2019 Florida Association Junior Olympics, the Novice Golden Gloves, and Boxing at St. Lucy. Our support statistics. District 9 is one of four designated areas in the county that provides fingerprint. In 2019, District 9 processed 1,056 requests for fingerprint services. We also picked up 158 trunks when we returned to school. The mounted unit provided 220 hours of horseback patrol in the village. Bicycle-equipped deputies provided 627.5 hours of patrol time. Marine-certified deputies provided 61 hours of marine patrol, and our deputies processed over 493 pounds of unwanted prescriptions dropped off to the district. Now let's move into calls for service. Calls for service depict the number of calls received by the community desiring our service. By dividing the village into different geographic sectors, the sheriff's office is able to deploy efforts as needs and patterns dictate. The computer-aided dispatch system, which is also known as CADS, captured a total of 101,720 incidents last year. Of those 101,720, 79,963 were proactive calls such as business or residence checks, traffic stops, and the like. The remaining 21,757 were law enforcement calls for service. Please note, there were 253 less calls for service in 2019 than there were in 2018. In other words, calls for service decreased by 1%. Our UCR stats, this is the meat and potatoes of our presentation, okay? The total crime index is used to measure the crime rate for 100,000 individuals. I am pleased to announce that it has incrementally dropped from 979 in 2015 to 712 in 2019. I'm equally pleased to announce that we had a 14.9% overall reduction in the crime rate in the village of Royal Palm Beach in 2019. The Uniform Crime Report, as indicated below, captures seven categories by which our crime rate is measured. First one is murder. One murder occurred in the village during 2019. We had a decrease of 50% in this crime from 2018 when there were two. Forceable rape, which is also known as sexual battery. There were seven sexual battery cases investigated in District 9 in 2019. The same numbers were investigated in 2018. All were acquaintance-related. There was no percentage change in this category. Robbery, there were nine in 2018 and 10 in 2019, an 11.1% increase. Aggravated assault, there were 43 in 2018 and 39 in 2019, a decrease of 9.3%. Burglary, there were 24 in 2018 and 31 in 2019, an increase of 29.2%. Larceny, including auto burglary, there were 690 in 2018 and 581 in 2019, a decrease of 15.8%. Motor vehicle theft, there were 45 in 2018 and 43 in 2019, a 4.4% decrease. Now that I've given an overview of the categories and statistics, I'll provide a more detailed breakdown about some of these reported crimes. Robberies. Of the previously mentioned 10 robberies, six cases were cleared by arrest. Two are inactive, and two were exceptionally cleared. Of the 10, seven were snatch and grab. One occurred at the 711 on Belvedere Road, one to a Lyft driver, and one of carjacking outside the Dunkin' Donuts. Arrests were made in both the carjacking and the Lyft driver robberies. Larceny incidents. There were 581 reported larcenies in 2019, 109 less than were reported in 2018, for a decrease of 15.8%. Of the 581 larcenies, 238 were shoplifting cases. That number rose from 205 in 2018 for an increase of 16.1%. Out of shoplifting incidents, 82 occurred at Target, 66 at Walmart, 16 at Lowe's, four at Costco, and two at BJ's. These shoplifting cases accounted for 71.4% of the overall total number of shoplifting cases, also included in reported larceny incidents for vehicle burglaries, which I will cover momentarily. Now residential burglaries, I'd like to take a minute to draw your attention to this because to me, this is a very important slide, and I'm going to break it down for you because I want the residents to feel safe in the comfort of their own homes. So I'm going to tell you the numbers we had, and then I'll break them down so you get a more realistic picture of what really stands out there. There were 23 burglaries in 2019, seven more than in 2018. This is the first time we've had an increase in this crime since 2015. However, noteworthy is the fact that five were to empty residences or apartments, and one case was domestic-related. Also, nine residents were left open or unlocked. Included in those nine were three incidents wherein garages were left open and bicycles were stolen. And in two, suspects entered unlocked patios. In summary, six secure residences were burglarized. This resulted in a 29.2% increase in this category. Now, please keep in mind, when I go over this, a burglary can be considered a burglary if someone goes into an open garage and removes a bicycle or lawnmower out of it. Conversely, if someone has a piece of equipment stored in a secured back patio in a fenced-in yard or not even necessarily fenced-in backyard, someone goes back there and takes it, that's a burglary. We've had a couple of instances, excuse me, a couple of incidents in some of our newly constructed developments wherein people went in and removed appliances. It's considered a burglary. So the overall number sounds great, but if you break down the nuts and bolts of it, we had six homes that were locked and secured that actually entered when no one was on. Moving on to vehicle burglary incidents. There were 256 vehicle burglaries in 2018 and 159 in 2019, a decrease of 37.9%. Vehicle burglaries accounted for 159 of the 581. Vehicle burglaries accounted for one hundred and fifty-nine of the five hundred and eighty-one reported larcenies. Of those one hundred and fifty-nine burglaries, one hundred and three or sixty-four point seven eight were the vehicles that were left unlocked. Eleven firearms were taken in these burglaries. In ten out of those eleven, the vehicles were left unlocked. Additionally, there were forty-five auto thefts in 2018 and forty-three in 2019, a decrease of four point four percent. Of those forty-three thefts, thirty-six or eighty-three point seven two involved keys that were either left in the vehicle or in an unlocked vehicle parked adjacent to the stolen one. And please note that included in these numbers are vehicles that were loaned out and not returned, sometimes by friends or family members, and also vehicles that disappeared off a deal of lots. Traffic. Three, excuse me, the top three crash locations in the village were determined to be State Road Eighty and Crestwood Boulevard, which had two fewer crashes in 2019 than 2018 for a reduction of two point two percent. State Road Eighty and US 441, which had twenty-five fewer crashes in 2019 than 2018 for a decrease of twenty-four point five percent. Okatomi Boulevard and State Road Seven had fourteen more crashes in 2019 than 2018 for an increase of twenty-four point six percent. Overall, we had one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two crashes in 2019, which was one hundred and one fewer crashes than in 2018 for a six percent reduction. Deputies issued five thousand, two hundred traffic citations and fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight warnings. Our District 9 Street Team, or Street Crimes Unit, as they're often referred to. The Street Team consists of four deputies and one sergeant. They are utilized for crime suppression, problem-solving, and support for road patrol. In 2019, the Street Team made two hundred and nine arrests resulting in eighty-seven felony and one hundred and sixty-six misdemeanor charges. They also made forty-three warrant arrests. They conducted eight hundred and thirty-seven traffic stops, issued two hundred and eighteen citations, four hundred and fifteen warnings, and completed two hundred and ninety-one field interview reports. Additionally, they authored and executed eight search warrants and assisted with an additional ten search warrants. Our District 9 detectives. Together, they were assigned three hundred and twenty-nine cases, made sixty-six arrests, and had a case clearance rate of twenty-three point seven one percent. The national clearance rate for detectives is nineteen point seven percent. As you can see, they're above that. Our quality survey. As a means by which to give the public satisfaction with the services rendered by District 9 deputies, surveys were mailed to four hundred and eighty people who requested our assistance. Of those, only ninety-three responded. Of those, ninety-five point nine six percent rated us as excellent, while four point four percent rated us as good. And then I enumerated all my goals here for 2020, but crime reduction through public education remains on the forefront for us, as you can see by the numbers I just gave. A lot of the crimes that happened were crimes of opportunity wherein people, for whatever reason, just left their vehicles unlocked or left keys inside. That's a trend that's continued through my tenure here in District 9 and continues this year. Also, we've seen early in 2020, before the pandemic hit and traffic was as normal, we saw a slight uptick in some of our traffic crashes somewhere our location. So we directed resources there to try and combat some of the red light running, some of the, you know, the traffic factors that we believe might have been a contributing factor. And short of that, before I go to questions, I'd like to give credit to the citizens and the deputies for the reduction in crime rate because we have a lot of good citizens out there that are locking their vehicles and bringing their stuff in, which is why this number isn't higher. We have a lot of good citizens out there, too, that are listening to the mantra, "If you see something, say something." They see kids out there where they shouldn't be. They're picking up the phone and calling. They're communicating. So if we can keep up that tempo, it'd be a good thing, and would certainly help with, you know, my numbers and the perception of crime in the community and keeping crime down low. And lastly, you know, I can't take credit for this reduction. It's, like I said last year and the seven other years I've been here before you, it's the deputies, the detectives, the street team units. It's where the rubber meets the road. So, that being said, I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions.
I guess, I do have one question. Do you anticipate any special, uh, surveillance or looking out for things? It's, looks like this summer, we won't have the summer programs that we usually have for the teenagers, the youth. Um, so, you know, does that open up a potential situation where we need to pay a little bit more attention to that?
Yes, sir. Well, we haven't seen too much, but we certainly expected it, but, um, our Street Crimes Unit, and I don't want to give too much information in open form, they monitor some of the problems that we have in the village, so to speak, and, you know, to make sure that they are where they're supposed to be doing what they're supposed to do. And I think we've identified a lot of those problem areas, and we deal with them as best as we can. We've been very successful in doing that.
I think we had a question from Richard.
Actually, not a question. I just wanted to comment. It looked like, uh, the robbery resolution rate was extremely high. I wanted to commend you guys for such good work because sometimes robbery is not an easy crime to, uh, to solve because, as you said, some of them are, you know, snatch and grab varieties where it's just a grab and go jump in the car and I'm out. And, uh, what, six of ten is pretty incredible. So keep up the good work, and please pass that word along that I was extremely impressed to see that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Jan, will you next? Jeff, I'm sorry.
So, let me add to the compliment for nearly fifteen percent reduction. Remarkable. And, um, also the, um, the notion that, um, educating people and getting mobilized, getting them to take action and kind of thing has a powerful effect. Hopefully, we'll see the same thing, doesn't directly relate, but indirectly to what you do for us here, uh, dealing with COVID-19 as well. The individual can make a huge difference, and when we do it collectively, it, uh, it's oftentimes more dramatic than any one organization can make it happen. But you provide the education and also the impetus for that, so congratulations for the great job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
We recently were listed ranked thirty-seventh out of safest cities in Florida by Safe Wise, a security company. That is due to all your hard work and the district's work and your leadership in that, and we appreciate that. And of course, the residents listening and heeding your words, so we appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Selena.
Yes, actually, and I would like to, um, also, along the same lines as my fellow council members, just to say thank you very much to the Sheriff's Office for everything they do. Thank you very much for being proactive in educating the community because I think that really does help a lot in helping us be aware of what to look out for and to help you do your job better. And thank you again for all the community involvement that you do, all the, um, the projects throughout. It really helps us have that sense that you are involved in the area and care for, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just want to say I do appreciate working with Rick and his team. Uh, they do a good job. They are out there. You know, we, one of the things, you know, we have cameras out there. Uh, we plan on putting more and more out there. They do help. They're getting more and more of them out in Palm Beach County. I'm starting to read more and more reports from Rick where, you know, the camera caught a tag, sent the warning out, and the people were caught. And it's, uh, it's a good day when it works that way.
Well, I'd also just like to close by saying, uh, congratulations on another great year. The safety of the citizens in our village is our number one concern. We want this to be, people to feel that they're living in a safe place, that their children are being raised in a safe place. And I think what we've seen happen over the years is because it has been safe, sometimes we're not as vigilant in certain things like locking our cars, for example. So that awareness program, I know that you've been undertaking, you still make people aware of the fact that, of course, to stay safe, let's do safe things, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
We're very proud of that track record, and we're very proud of being in the top ten percent of one of the safest cities of all the cities in the state of Florida. So, job well done, and continue to keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item R3. And that would be for appointment of one resident to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And our council liaison is Councilwoman Raduski. I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you. We have a position open, and I would like to make a motion to reappoint David Leland for another three-year term, term expiring in 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Diane, please let the record show that appointment for Agenda Item R3 was approved 5-0. Agenda Item R4 is appointment of two residents to the Recreation Advisory Board. And the council liaison for that is Councilwoman Samuels.
Thank you. Yes, we do have two positions that, uh, where their terms were up, and they both asked to be reappointed. So I make a motion to reappoint Shannoy and Sandy to a two-year term on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that appointment for Agenda Item R4 was approved 5-0. Agenda Item R5 is appointment of three residents to the Education Advisory Board. Council liaison is Vice Mayor Hermara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have two of, uh, three sitting members of the board who've indicated that they would like to remain on the board. One of the, uh, regular members, uh, had indicated that, um, he no longer wished to remain a member. So, uh, we've netted out with one vacancy out of that. So I would like to make a motion, uh, to reappoint Pamela Shetka to regular seat for another two-year term expiring in March, 2022, and to appoint alternate Lisa Ryan to a regular seat for a two-year term expiring March, 2022. That's one motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that regular Agenda Item appointments for R5 were approved 5-0. So now, so now there's a vacancy, I guess we'll-
Right, we'll advertise the vacancy. We did have a gentleman indicate that he was interested, uh, and submitted an application. And, um, unfortunately, uh, for us in a lot of ways, uh, he's planning to move out of Royal Palm Beach, so he let me know shortly after we spoke that he was not going to be able to participate. So we do have that vacancy.
Good. All right, Agenda Item R6 is, uh, update discussion on COVID-19 from the village manager.
Okay, thank you. So COVID-19 update. There's a lot been going on the last two months, and a lot has changed in the last two months. And our life is going to be different the next twelve to eighteen months. The, um, we're in the process now where we have to look at all of the events we have planned, all the things we have budgeted, and what is different going forward. And we're in the process now of creating our budget for 2021. And looking at the effect of COVID-19 on the revenues, the expenditures, and what we're able to do. The experts will tell us that the population is not safe from the coronavirus until there is a vaccine where the majority of the population has been infected. Until then, openings and restarts of activities will be based on activity's ability to follow CDC guidelines and the rate of the community's new infections. So in the beginning, the closings began. To protect the public and the workforce, we closed facilities, stopped programs and activities, initiated remote work, furloughed employees, reduced pay. Uh, we did a combination of both of those. We installed clear barriers at workstations. We increased cleaning at high-touch areas, and we handed out protection to the employees. We created a coronavirus webpage with links to useful websites, local food resources, operational updates, and online links to do business with Royal Palm Beach. We participated in hundreds of online meetings with agencies, organizations, customers, and staff. Our mission statement is one that says, "Providing services and facilities to provide an aesthetically pleasing, active, connected community." That was a challenge in the last two months, and that will look different the next twelve months. Other than parks and recreation, parks are open now. Village services continued uninterrupted. Uh, summer maintenance schedule was postponed, but we are now on the summer maintenance, uh, schedule. And it was interesting, you know, usually the beginning of April is when we switch from the every two weeks to every week on the mowing. That also affect litter pickup, even though we do a litter pickup every Monday morning on our roadways. Litter pickup on some of the other mode areas only happen when it's mode. So, uh, when I started seeing emails of, "Is Okatomi going to be mowed again?" Where is, the litter on the, along the power lines is getting out of hand. So it was noticed. So I guess the time that we have that change is kind of ideal. But we did that to keep the employees that we had at home a little bit longer. The ones we had at home at reduced pay a little bit longer. They are all back now, and we are back on that full schedule as it relates to, uh, the maintenance schedules. Facility maintenance continued. Program activity stopped, and the ability to keep our community connected was limited to information provided through council meetings, The Vector, Village Voice, our webpage, and a few key responses on Facebook. So what are we looking at going forward, the opening? Since the population will be at risk at least through the next school year, practicing social distancing, wearing masks, washing your hands frequently, and trying to avoid touching your face will be the norm. Activities will be limited to their ability to follow CDC guidelines. Phase one openings for Palm Beach County was May eleventh. That opened restaurants and other businesses at twenty-five percent capacity. It's since been changed to fifty percent capacities. Our beaches are now open. Our restaurants and our recreation buildings and gymnasiums can be opened at fifty percent capacity. That gives us a little bit we can do with looking at our recreation center or gym going forward, what can be done there. As the restaurants that we have, you know, at the fifty percent capacity, we are looking at, uh, modifying our special event permits to allow, and I'll go through this right now, a special event for temporary outdoor seating. Since their indoor capacity, originally, we started drafting this when it was at twenty-five percent and was a real concern by the restaurant community. Since it's moved to fifty, I don't know if the concern's not as great, but I still think it's a desire of many of our restaurants and breweries out there. So what we did is created a special event permit for temporary outdoor seating. It's only for restaurant brew pubs and microbreweries. We are looking to allow, uh, outdoor seating on sidewalks and parking lots. The logic on the parking lots, while if the capacity is reduced by fifty percent, there may be some available space available out there, as long as it can be done safely. They'll still have to meet all the requirements of our special event ordinance. The temporary outdoor seating request needs to be accompanied with a scaled drawing so we can, everybody can review it, make sure everything's consistent with ADA standards, CDC guidelines, and all the, and the governor's executive order and the county's order. We are looking at the special permit to be a no-cost permit and to be good for thirty days, approved by council. And then staff with the ability to do thirty-day extensions, or Planning and Zoning Director approved thirty-day extensions. As long as the rules were followed, nothing's been changed, and it's just a continuation of the existing one. But we'll take that review, that everything's still in place and everything applies. The, um, we do limit or don't allow outdoor music as part of the permit. And the failure of the permit holder to comply with any of the conditions may result in its revocation. So we are looking at that as relates to restaurants and brew pubs and microbreweries. Going on with openings and where we're at with that, Palm Beach County has, was awarded CARES Act funding, funding for businesses. They are opening that application process tomorrow at eight o'clock. The, um, and it's up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Up to twenty-five thousand dollars for COVID-related, uh, business impacts.
For businesses with less than twenty-five employees.
Yes, yes. So the, it, there is a lot of information that's requested. It's all on the county's website. We did put a link on our website that went live today, I believe. That kind of gives a little information and then the link to go to their website. But you can also go directly to the county's website and go under Updates, and they have it on, that you can find it there, too. Let's see. Public spaces and village buildings, we're looking at opening June 1st. As far as Village Hall, we're going to still continue to use the Ring Doorbell and the ability of our people to push a buzzer and open the door if the people need to come in. They will be checking to make sure the person has a mask. If they don't have a mask, we'll give them a mask before they enter the building. We are going to require that everybody in our buildings in the near future wear a mask. For our staff, if they're in their office, their workspace, it's not required for them to wear a mask, but when they leave that area and go into public areas, we're going to require that they wear a mask.
What if somebody comes and joins them in their office?
If you, if you join somebody else, go in somebody else's office and you can meet the CDC guidelines for distancing and both people agree to not wear a mask, then they can do that. Meetings with Village Hall employees will be by appointment, but walk-up customers will be welcomed by the Ring Doorbell prior to gaining access to the building at Village Hall. All customers entering the building will be required to wear a mask. The post office will not be open in the near future because we just cannot control the CDC guidelines as it relates to that because it's such a small space in front there. The Recreation Center, the Cultural Center, and the Sporting Center at Commons Park will be open June 1st with limited capacity and necessary restrictions. When I, what I mean by that is we can't have people gathering in there. The Rec Center, this summer, we're still looking at the possibility of doing summer camp, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end of this presentation. So, but it would, those, the Cultural Center can be operated at 50% capacity. So we are looking at bringing those employees back in June 1st and reconfiguring what they can rent and remarketing what they can rent, aside these events they can rent, and putting all the guidelines in place for that. Village online and phone services are available to all residents. Village parks are open sunrise to sunset. Dog parks are open now. Sports fields, playgrounds, and buildings still remain closed, mainly because of the gathering. Driving range is open. Tennis, basketball, racquetball courts are open. Indoor program activities at village facilities still remain canceled. Planning and zoning board meeting will be conducted on June 9th with a limited agenda, and June 23rd with a more full agenda. And we are looking at going to go-to webinar for those meetings. Village essential services and functions continue without interruption during regular business hours, including building and code enforcement inspections. Village council meeting in June will be the 18th, followed by a budget workshop July 7th. Conversations regarding what can open and when continue until the population is safe from the virus. Openings and activities will be based on activities influenced on the rate of new infections, as I said earlier, and the ability to follow the CDC guidelines. So going forward, what does that look like? We don't know exactly, and there's a lot of people saying, "I don't know." I mean, we're still hearing from the school board, "I don't know. Here's all the possibilities." I did see in the newspaper that the person, the chancellor in charge of the university's school system in Florida said they're going to recommend that schools open with students on campus this fall. There's, there's two obviously opposite ends here that we're dealing with, that I think two stories that tell it the best. There was an article in the newspaper about UF football, and they're asking the athletic director what they're planning, and his response was, "I'm planning for an opening game September 5th with a full stadium." And his response was, "I have no other choice but to plan for that." UF football nets $48 million. The next sport is men's basketball, $2.5 million. The next 21 sports is cost $33 million. Without UF football, there's no UF sports. That's going to be the pressure. That's one school out of thousands out there. And that's the pressure that you see out there. But we all think, how, you know, you can't fill a stadium. How are you going to fill a stadium? So we're going to, I think it'll happen as far as the sports, but it's just something's going to be different, and I'm sure it's going to be the capacity thing. The other story out there is a choir group on the West Coast that continued to get together. 60 of them were practicing and continuing their choir group activities, and one person got it. Forty-five, gave it to 45 others in the 60-member group, and three went to the hospital. Two, I know, died. I think, I'm not sure the third one made it. So there, that's a story nobody wants coming out of their community. So we are all needing to look at what our community is doing differently going forward. And I got to admit, you know, this is, this is different. We've never had to deal with this. You know, everybody that's been in this business, Lou has been in this business, we've never dealt with this. This is really unique. You know, that mission statement of active, connected community makes it tough, makes it real tough. And clearly, there's been a financial impact on businesses out there. 33 million people applied for unemployment. Well, 60% of our revenue is based on consumption, and that is down. Our revenue collections this year are off by a couple million dollars. The good news is our expenditures are off by a million and a half. Not as, not the full two, but not, not, not a, that helps. The unfortunate, the unfortunate part in looking forward is, is we tip, our budgets typically relied on significant amount of carryover to fund the next year. That difference between revenue and expenditures, that difference, or revenue, planned revenues and actual revenues, that difference between planned expenditures and actual expenditures. When you have a drop in revenue like that, fortunately, we do have, still the million and a half drop in expenditures, but they're not going to meet each other. And when we look at next year's budget, it's, while we don't expect as much of a drop as we experienced when we were at a stay-at-home position, this now safer-at-home goal is, we're not looking to be as, as much of an impact. But still, when you combine the loss this year, the loss next year, it affects the budget to, to needing the reserves. At about a million and a half more than we're used to using them to balance the budget, to low over $3 million to do that. The good news is, we have reserves, and I think reserves are for emergencies like this. So I, but the difference between this impact versus the impact that we got in eight, nine, 10, 11 was the demand for services in eight, nine, 10, 11 didn't change. It actually probably went up because there was the recession and people were looking at the local community for services. This time, the services greatly reduced because of the CDC guidelines for activities. So what does that look like going forward? We prepared, we're preparing the budget without the Fourth of July this year. When we, and the budget we prepared, the assumptions we used, we're using through the budget, through the school year of next year. So we expect to reevaluate these assumptions at our next strategic planning session in March, and then probably come to you in April or May with a, with a different assumptions, if they're different than what we're assuming today, and a budget adjustment at that time. We did budget for the Fourth of July next year. We thought that would be too pessimistic not to put it in next year's budget. But it's not, we're not doing it, obviously, this year. We're not budgeting for Rocktober Fest in October. We're not budgeting for Winter Fest, and we're not budgeting for the Seafood Festival. If our assumptions change, we obviously will bring that back to you. Our senior activities are going to be limited to keeping the board engaged. We do want to keep our young-at-heart board engaged and talking to us and us talking to them. And, and so we are planning monthly, their monthly meetings, stating the budget. Youth sports, I think, is unknown. At this time, we, but I, I think the CDC guidelines and the relaxation of those social distancing things will, will start with children, and then, and then go, and then obviously, the most susceptible part of the population will stay with them longer. So I do think that the national organizations, as it relates to youth sports, will, will probably try to reimagine what that looks like. It could be fewer teams, fewer kids on a team. Because I think, you know, you go up to nine kids on a team with a coach, and, but we don't know that yet. But we're, we're keeping those conversations open with the, with those groups. The, our rentals at the Cultural Center clearly going to be limited to the 50% capacity. Our contracted private, provided activities will have limited capacity due to social distancing, but they're still interested in, in providing their, their, the dance or the, or the adventure learning with the three- to five-year-olds, or the karate. So there, we've talked to them all, and they're all still interested in doing that. Obviously, if we can do more things out of Commons Park on the Great Lawn and keep the social distancing, our, we do have an aerobic class out there. We may be doing more of that, and we're keeping our minds open as it relates to that. Clearly, the maintenance of the facilities will remain the same, or if not get better, since we can focus on that part of our mission statement maybe even more. The timing of capital will need to be adjusted as necessary. You know, the sales tax is fairly new to us. We were, we were estimating it fairly low compared to what we were bringing in. We did raise those estimates last year. So that may, that budget may be affected a little bit where we have to move some capital projects. I think, though, based on what we were getting from, on, on sales tax, there's probably a good chance that that ninth year or 10th year would have been cut short because I think we said no more than $3.7 billion or some number like that. This probably gave us that, that 10th year that we might have otherwise not have. So I don't think overall it's not going to have a great impact on the capital, but just maybe the timing of the capital. Summer camps, we have open conversations. You know, at first, we didn't think summer camps would be possible because of the limited places we can take. Our summer camps are large groups going to field trips. We, since the Rec Center can be opened at 50% capacity, we were looking at our space there and talked to our camp counselor about what, what we could do. We know we've got six separate rooms there with a large gym. So Lou is talking to that camp counselor director right now and trying to come up with a program where we can, where we can run, let's see, it would be at least five counselors with nine each, 45 students, to maybe as much as, as 10 if we can figure out how to, how to handle them in our, in the space that we have. So, well, 10 counselors would be 90 kids. So somewhere around 45 to 90 kids, we may be able to handle. We just got to come up with a program that can keep them busy all day at the Rec Center or with limited field trips locally. And that's kind of what, like, we could do a morning at the Royal Pine Natural Area. But then we got it, or a morning at one of the parks, or a day at one of the parks, and move the, the kids are here for two weeks, 10 days. So that's what we're looking at, and if, we're hoping that we can come up with a program and market it and start it June 15th. So in summary, we will be bringing to you at the Budget Workshop, July, tentatively scheduled for July 7th, a Tuesday. July 2nd is the first Thursday of the month. It's right before a holiday, which is, we have, July 3rd off. So we're looking at doing that Budget Workshop on, on July 7th, the following Tuesday. And that budget will look, will look different than what we've seen in the past. And we're going to respond to what this coronavirus throws at us. It didn't mean, but we're obviously got to keep with the rules and the regulations and the distancing and do it differently this next year, but keep an open mind. So that's my update.
Okay. I think this should have, one, your question?
Yeah. I thought I heard you say twice that the use of the buildings of the village, everyone's going to be required to wear a mask inside the building to do business with us inside the building. Anybody coming into our buildings to do business, must wear a mask. Does that include the Rec Center and people running around with masks on? So if you're playing basketball, you're going to have to have a mask on. If you go to summer camp, if we have it there, all the kids are going to be wearing masks.
Well, we don't, the Rec Center is not going to be open for open play this, this summer, if we do the summer camp. If we don't do the summer camp, it would be. But right now, we're looking at people coming into our building needing to wear a mask. Actually, at the Rec Center, since that's where we think we'll get the most traffic, what we're looking at is the sheriff's office is coordinating with our grant person to buy, to buy one of those machines that takes your temperature as you walk in the front door and takes your picture if it's over 100.4, and then those people, we won't even allow them to the Rec Center. But right now, yeah, we're, we're, when you come to the, when the outside comes into Village Hall to do business, we want them wearing a mask. When they go into the Cultural Center to meet with our staff, we want them wearing a mask. In the Rec Center, we want them coming in wearing a mask. If they get into a room and they're doing something separate and not interacting with other people, then, you know, so, but we are, yes, we are looking at, and to the point of denying people service if they're not willing to wear a mask when doing business with us.
Thank you. That was a very thorough report. A couple of questions. I've seen a couple of food trucks now heading, hanging out in parks, and people are congregating. Is there, is that a violation? Is it okay? I mean, what's...
Well, they're not getting permits to do it in the parks. We are, we are going to maintain our movie night and our concert nights at the park with the food truck and trucks, and we'll do it in such a way where, the rule of social distancing, that's, that's people supposed to keep the social distancing. I, I have seen the food trucks showing up at different parks for an hour or two. Is it against any law?
No.
Kind of like them, but I just want to make sure.
It's not being sanctioned right now, and it's not, pretty temporary.
And, and then, can you just clear up for our residents, especially because I know that there's been lots of miscommunication about why Walmart was not approved for testing, as a testing site?
So, why? Because they would not agree to hold the residents of Royal Palm Beach harmless to indemnify the village residents of Royal Palm Beach for their wrongdoing or negligence. You know, we were treating that as a special event permit because it was the use of their parking lot, which it otherwise wasn't site planned for. And, and that requires a special, which has a pretty inclusive hold harmless and indemnity that protects the village of Royal Palm Beach and our residents. We were willing to modify that to say, "Okay, we know this is special. We know this is good to have testing. But you still need to be in charge of this event, and you still need to manage it, and you still need to sign the owner affidavit saying it's on your property and you're in charge, and you need to not hold us liable for your negligence of your employees or willful acts of your employees." And they felt they were very uncomfortable doing that. I think they felt that, that they had some release of liabilities from the CARES Act that, that signing that would interfere with. And then their lawyers felt very uncomfortable agreeing to that. So it didn't go anywhere. But was it the right place? I mean, for us, we didn't know if that was the right place to start with. And you got, so you've got a, a testing site where you're bringing people that qualify for testing, so they have symptoms. And you're bringing them to a site that is a essential service site that stayed open, business that stayed open. And, and there wasn't a whole lot of room on their property to do both businesses. They had them over there where the pickup area for the, for Walmart was, which was, is an increasing business and getting more and more popular. The other, the other thing was, was security. I mean, this was, they were charging. The number I got was, I thought it was $150 a test that was being charged to insurance. You had to pre-register. It was going through, can't remember the drug, the testing lab, Quest Labs. Quest Labs, and, and they were, you know, you had to pre-register with them and give them all their information. So, I mean, they were making upwards, grossing upwards of, you know, $12, $15,000 a day, but they needed security by our police at the tune of three a day. but they needed security by our police at the tune of, of three a day, which would cost us a couple of thousand dollars a day. Or, yeah, a day. And, um, in the long run, it wasn't the right place for testing. Fortunately, MD Now is doing testing. Um, you're going to get more hospitals doing testing. You're going to get more doctor's offices doing testing. I know, uh, Premier is doing it. They, they're my doctor and they're doing that. They're the ones who are, were doing it for, at the Wellington location. Uh, Wellington has found that, you know, their does up, their demand for testing is going down. And when it gets under a certain number, they're just going to discontinue it, which I think they're, they'll get to fairly soon and let them go to the, to the premier offices and do it. You know, we need more testing. Nobody is against the testing. It, it just, just wasn't, wasn't the right place.
It wasn't right. And, um, the decision, while it may seem to our residents to be short sighted, it was actually very, very well thought out and very much protective of our residents. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mayor, I have the village attorney that would like to speak and also a resident, Julie Landono, would like to speak about sidewalk sales. Does anyone speak to the village attorney first?
Keith, you're on. Can you hear me?
I thought I heard village attorney, but I didn't hear, uh, the contact.
I'm sorry. What happened? You don't have a comment, Keith?
Uh, if you had a question or you wanted me to contribute to the discussion, but I did not, uh, I didn't.
You didn't ask to?
I didn't.
Okay.
Raised my virtual hand.
You didn't raise your, okay.
Oh, Mayor, we have a resident.
We do have a public comment on the line, so let's give that opportunity for the public comment. Are they going to be able to speak directly?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, did she, did she, did she put the information in the chat for us?
A question about a sidewalk sale, but they're getting her.
Is it a question related to the report we just got from the manager?
Sidewalk sales.
I'm confused. All right, have a chat it and chat it in. In the meantime, I think, uh, Jeff, you're up there.
Can you hear me now?
Sounds like it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Great. Um, my name is, uh, Julie Landono and I am the landlord representative for RPC Realty. Um, we are the owners of the Crossroads Shopping Center directly across from the village. Um, I am calling because I am actually raising my hand to ask a question. I heard the, um, information on the restaurant, um, you know, concession you are putting together to possibly allowing a case by case basis additional seating in the exterior and parking. But I didn't hear anything about a retail that may want to do something on their immediate outdoor area. Um, are you guys planning to provide them an special event permit as well? So they can set a table outside their space to allow the six foot rule and so on?
We have not had those discussions. We have not gotten that request either. We do have a, a section of our code that talks about sidewalk sales. Uh, they're very, uh, temporary in nature. We would have to, we would have to get the request and review it as it relate. You, you could apply for a sidewalk sale uh, to debt, in our, in, in our existing ordinance now, and we can take a look at that as it relates to COVID nineteen. But I, I, that, that putting, putting product out on the sidewalk, um, is a little bit different than the restaurants, but we could always have, we could always look at it.
So, the goal that I have, and I actually sent, uh, my, my list of, of questions, um, in, in fillable PDF form through the email on the, on the agenda document on the website, was because, I mean, since we are the landlord and we own the center, um, our priority is not to, you know, allow the tenant to do whatever they want and then have to come back and, you know, kind of, eh, you know, hurl back everyone to the rule is to learn from you guys what is it that you are willing to do and what not, so that we can provide a package guidance to a tenant, um, where they know they need to provide, you know, a site plan, a design, a permit, where the permit is at. Um, and that's why we're asking these questions. Um, same thing with gym operations. Are you allowing classes on the, on the parking lot? Um, is this can be considered a special event? Um, if, if, we just want our boys to then on taking initiative and doing whatever they want and then we're receiving a fine in our property.
Julie, I think the best thing to do would be to call me at the office at seven nine oh, five one, six two, and we can discuss your site.
And what is your name, sir?
Ray Liggins, seven nine oh, five one, six two.
Okay.
Yep, Ray Liggins is the village manager. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Ray. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And what department is it that you're in? I'm sorry, it's so hard to hear.
Okay. I think, I would think we were getting a, a question from Jeff.
My, my question has to do with, um, enforcement of social distancing and masks. Uh, this has come up a number of times. You want to talk to that a little bit?
Well, you know, that all, all the rules say masks are recommended, uh, but when you're in our buildings receiving service, I mean, we have the right to make that mandatory. We don't have the right to make that mandatory for people out in the public. Um, each store owner can make it mandatory in, on their own property. Uh, I will tell you that on our signs for the, for the parks, um, we, we, the most recent signs you see going out say, wear your mask, not masks are recommended. Uh, because I really do, that is the greatest protection people have this next twelve months. So that's going to be the mantra, is wear your mask.
So if someone, um, observes, um, violations of social distancing at a restaurant or, um, capacity violations, who, who should they call upon to?
So the, the, the code enforcement is, is the first, um, will be the first educational process. Uh, the police sheriff's office will be the second. Uh, but we will be looking at, myself and, and other cities have talked about, you know, putting together some guidelines, some rules. They're out there and they're written. Um, but kind of just like our code is written, but then we come up with a code enforcement kind of assistance and educational assistance for them. So we will continue to update our website to assist people. We will continue to, to put materials together to assist people. Our feeling is that once they know and have, and know the rules, um, they, they'll follow. They'll follow them because they're cut, I don't know that, I think people are real conscientious about this and I'm not sure that they can keep a customer base if they don't enforce the rules, because then people won't feel safe going there. Uh, but the, um, the enforcement will be, will be education through code enforcement and, and the police department, the sheriff's office.
So if somebody observes something that they're pretty sure is a flat out violation, um, people congregating at a bar that's not even supposed to be open and, and that type of thing, um, who, who should they report that to?
Report that to our, our code enforcement department.
I. Yeah, just to follow up on, on Jan's food truck comment, uh, I've seen them in neighborhoods too. So, okay.
Are there any other comments? Um, Diane from the public?
No other comments.
Um, I'm going to close public comment then to agenda item R six. If there are no further comments. Uh, no further comments from the, uh, council. I guess the question I have for you, Ray, is, is there anything specifically you need us to, uh, to make a determination on tonight, or was this just a more of an informational brief on the direction you're going and that you're going to be coming back to us with?
It was an informational brief, this is to tell you that, that our services look different next year. Our used reserves look different.
It would, our, our, the purpose was to say the budget, my, one of my responsibilities is to present you a budget. This budget is different than any other budget I presented you. It actually has, is, is a negative one and a half percent on, on expenditures, uh, negative one and a half, two percent. Um, so it, it's, um, I never proposed one of those, so it's definitely, definitely different, but it's because the work has changed. And, and it's not just a short time. It's not two months. It's, 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 in my opinion, it's through the school year and next year. So we're looking at this as, as this, that chunk of time reevaluated in the, in May. And if we have to do a budget adjustment and, and look at things differently at that time, we will. Uh, but like the senior activities, I, I don't see them together, uh, with their field trips and their, and their three hundred person meals uh, this fall and spring. They're off in the summer. So I think that's a twenty twenty-two budget item, not a twenty twenty-one budget item. So I will be bringing a different budget to you that, that is different on, on expenditures, a different on what we spend on events and different on what we spend on employees.
Okay. I guess I'll just like to make a, a comment to put something in context that we talked, we spoke about. This notion of, of, um, looking to provide restaurants who normally are not authorized to have outdoor seating, um, is something that we're, we're looking to do because I think part of the reality as we go through a reopening phase, which we're in now, there has to be a level of confidence, uh, by our citizens that they are going to feel safe in attending the, the restaurants and, and engaging again in a way we did pre- uh, previous to this happening. And, um, I think the guidance we've gotten from the scientists and CDC is outdoor seating is, uh, is, is, is better than indoor seating. And to that extent, um, we're looking to make that, that option available through the process that was outlined by, by the village manager for the restaurants in the village of Royal Palm Beach. Um, we want our, our residents to, uh, get a sense of confidence again to engage in, and because if, if the, if the customers don't come out, that's only going to make the, the, the process of reopening and re-engaging businesses and getting the economy moving, it's going to make it longer. Um, at the same time, though, we don't want to endanger our citizens. And to that, my message is, you know, to the degree that everyone is willing to cooperate with the ground rules that are being put in place, uh, to practice the distancing rules, to wear the masks, um, i- I think it's to the, to the betterment of everyone involved. Um, so with that, I think we'll move on. Okay. The last and final item on agenda this evening, uh, agenda item R seven is our annual review evaluation. I'm sorry, what was that? Selena, are you there? Is that you? We're not hearing you.
I am here, but that is not me. I, I was.
All right, we'll move on. It's the annual review and evaluation of merit paid determination for the village manager. And it says here, village attorney. So you want to open us with this, Keith?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
So section two dash two of the village code, uh, provides for the powers and duties of the village manager. And one of the things that provides for is a performance evaluation. And the code says that the council shall review and evaluate the performance of the manager at least once per year in accordance with the manager's contract, and that the evaluation should utilize objective criteria established in conjunction with the goals and objectives of the village council. Now, we're, uh, Mr. Liggins is in the second year of his, uh, fifth employment agreement. And, uh, one of the provisions of that contract indicates that the village agrees to consider the grant of a merit pay during the annual performance review, uh, of Mr. Liggins, which amount, if granted in any year, shall not increase the base salary, but shall be paid in a lump sum within thirty days from the date of the grant. So those are, those are the code and contractual provisions that are relevant to, uh, this agenda item and this annual performance review.
Okay. Do you turn that back over to me? Is there anything else?
Yes, sir. I'll turn that back over to you. I believe you, uh, had previously circulated, proposed, uh, the proposed objective, uh, criteria. And, uh, the council has, has utilized those, is my, my understanding.
Yes, the council was given, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, uh, the, the evaluation criteria. Um, so I guess what we're going to do is, uh, we'll go around with each person. And Selena, we, I guess we'll start with you. You could kick us off with your, your evaluation.
Thank you. Uh, once again, thank you very much, Ray, for everything you do for us and the village, uh, just, especially over the last few months, but over the last year, if you want me to evaluate this, this past year, it's, uh, you know, creating new policy for COVID nineteen, adjusting the budget for this year. Just making sure the will is prepared for everything that we have to do, um, answering the questions that the residents have, keeping us on track. Uh, we've had these conversations before as far as our budget and specifically our reserves. And we have that based on all the work you've done over the past several years as well. So thank you very much for all that you do.
Okay. Yeah, I'd, um, I guess I'll go through the evaluation standards, but I, um, like Selena, appreciate the hard work Ray has done and especially during these trying times, uh, you know, it's not, not an easy thing and I, and I think it's testament to his leadership how well the village works and especially through this crisis, um, what it's worth, the evaluation standards, employee relations. He gave a five image, which I think he really does enhance and has a great reputation throughout the community, a five as well. Long range, long range planning, a five. We've seven years? How many years have we been doing the strategic? Nine strategic planning session, which was something, um, that didn't exist before he was the village manager. Um, communications, I would say a four, and completion direction of capital projects. He only, the only reason he got a four was because of that damn chandelier. So, uh, but it's, but it's pretty high marks if you add them up. So I, I just want to say thanks a lot, Ray, for the, for the good work you've done.
Okay, I'm going to start with the chandelier. And, and it, as far as I'm concerned, it, it, um, it had such an interesting story and demonstration of tenacity, perseverance, creative, uh, that we even wound up with chandeliers, quite frankly. So all in all, I, I think that netted out to, um, a, a pretty much a plus. Um, looking at the employee relations, uh, you, you don't get great things done without a great staff and, and a great team. And, uh, and that is also a function of, of, uh, the leadership. There's no doubt about it. When you look at how many people stay for a career, uh, here in the village, uh, that's, that's remarkable. That's testimony. And, and the fact that we are still getting new people in who are excited about being here and doing some interesting things, that, it's a great combination. I think, uh, HR administration as well as the village leadership really, uh, has done outstanding job in that area. Image, I mean, we, we had a chance to trot out our image at their sixtieth anniversary celebration. I think, I think that went. Image, I mean, we, we had a chance to trot out our image at their sixtieth anniversary celebration, and I think, I think that went very well, and I think we kind of reinforced the reputation I think we have throughout the county, and watching a lot of the municipalities from the League of Cities perspective this year made me feel even better about our, our village, not, not to be critical at all, but we, we do some, some really remarkable work for the size village we are, the resources we have, and, and so, and our image is pretty, pretty sound and pretty well intact throughout, throughout the county, I think. Long range planning, as, as which I said, you know, we didn't, we didn't really have that. We had a budget, and that was pretty much driving, and it was, it was the, the document that captured what our plans were going forward. We've been doing this for, pick a number, eight or nine years, and it's gotten better every year, and, and better from my point of view means not just putting a good plan together, but implementing it, executing it, and when you, when you look at the performance metrics that, that we monitor and the spreadsheet that we get once a quarter, we've come out pretty consistently between eighty and ninety percent complete in, in accordance with the scheduled activities there. And not the mince words, but I mean, staying with schedule is not an easy thing. If you've ever been a project manager, you know that that is, that's a huge challenge. So eighty, ninety percent is, is remarkable. Financial management, we're among, if not one of the best, and most sound financial, financially sound communities in, in Palm Beach County. And, but I will say that COVID-19 is gonna provide some challenges for us. The thinking that's going on already is evidence of the approach that I've seen used before, dealing with tough times and, and good times as well. And again, I'm, I'm confident we're gonna handle this because of the, the folks that we have on the staff and, and Ray's leadership. And I know one thing, it's, it's, it's gonna get wrung out really, really well, and so I think, I think we'll be, we'll be fine going forward. Capital improvement projects, I already commented on. See, you do one thing, chandeliers, and you hear about it forever. Communications with council, excellent overall, and, and this is even under the current circumstance. And I've heard the word disruption used a lot in the last couple of years, and if there's ever been a disruption, it's this COVID-19 thing. And one of the biggest challenges is the communications piece of it, and, and that is because things change so rapidly. And also, we don't have our normal connection, and, and I think, I think Ray's done well. I think there are lessons we can learn from this whole experience that can make us even more effective communicating and going forward. But there's always, there's two things that have always impressed me about Ray's performance. One is, he's always willing to do more than even what might just be necessary. I mentioned the analysis and that kind of thing. I've watched him do his own independent analysis, and I've, I've been on staff, so I know what it feels like when your boss is doing his own independent analysis. It's, it's not something you beg for usually, but it's something that makes the end product much, much better, there's no doubt about it. And the other is, he's always willing to improve, so I think he's done an outstanding job again this year.
Well, you know, this exercise, I actually enjoy doing every year because it's easy. You make it easy for us, Ray. You do such a great job, and we, I think about these six criterion. You could get another person who's just as capable, but here's what the difference is. You have an overall stewardship view about our village, and so you can't, you don't separate each one of those criterion and think about it that way. You think about the overall protection of our village, reducing risk, creating safety, being really prudent when it comes to our financial assets and our physical assets. And I agree with my fellow counsel, and you just do a phenomenal job. And, and with this very novel COVID pandemic, the foresight, and, and really, if you had a crystal ball, you pivot and you, you, you think about and you analyze and you critique and you come out with probably three or four different options, but ones that are safe and ones that are smart and ones that will get us to a place in a year and a half or two years down the road, and, and coming out stronger and safer and, and more financially sound than some of our counterparts over the county. So I really appreciate all the work that you do for us and the residents of Royal Palm.
Well, I absolutely couldn't agree more with all of the comments made by the members on council, Ray. I've said this before, and I say it again, and it's, it's even more meaningful now because, you know, when things are going well, there are no, there are no ripples in, in the water, you know, it's, it's easy to kind of move along and, and manage along. But when you have a, a, a storm, and we are living in a storm right now with this, with this COVID-19 situation, and it's, it's, it's been a very fluid situation, there, there, you know, there's so many moving parts that are going on, but in spite of that, you've been able to keep a focus on, you know, trying to anticipate where things are gonna go and keep us nimble so, so that we could, we could move and pivot as we need to as we go forward, and kind of looking forward, as you have indicated in your report, the next twelve months, the next eighteen months. We need to position ourselves, and I think that's what you're giving us, is the ability to sustain the ability to keep this, this city moving in the right direction, and to make sure that we're paying attention to the things that are important to our citizens, and, and, and whatever we can do to help the businesses within our community, you know, hopefully to get back on a positive track. It's also clear, unfortunately, that we are going to see financial challenges and some financial distress, which is very different, I agree, the point you made is very different than what we experienced in the downturn, because the, the mechanisms that we're driving at are very different than the mechanisms driving this today, which really is, is out of our control. We just have to be in a position to react in the right way. I, I say that because, given the, the tremendous job you've been doing, and you continue to do, the fact that we're so fortunate to have you here as the manager in our village is why we are where we are as a village, and why we're viewed the way we're viewed. But at the same time, because of the financial issues we're looking at, I think if I heard a message that you were trying to deliver to us, we're gonna have to be a little bit lean, more lean in our operations budget going forward, at least for the next year. And I also heard you say that although you're gonna come back with a budget for us, we ought to be prepared to review some of the things in that within a six-month window or some point down, downstream, because things are fluid, and things may change, and we may have to make adjustments. But would I be incorrect in reading that one of the things we're probably gonna be looking at, instead of having a five percent allocation for merit increases across the board, budget-wise, that we're probably gonna look at something less than that, maybe somewhere around three percent? Is that a, that accurate read?
We did that in the years in, in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve. I don't know how many we actually did that, but we've done that before where, where we were, where our revenues and expenditures were off. That, that's a, that's a reasonable thing to do when, when, when the revenues and the expenditures are off like they are, or like we're predicting. And they are. I mean, our collections the last two months have not been the same.
Okay, so you think it might then be practical if we were to recommend? Normally I would, clearly we would recommend, if we were gonna do five percent, I would recommend the merit number for you would be five percent. But if we're looking at a three percent number, which that's gonna be the max number. I know our practice in the past, and your, your philosophy in the past would say that you would not want more than that. You wouldn't want to not be more than a three percent if that's the, the ceiling that we're gonna be putting in place with employees.
Yeah, that, that is logical, that makes sense.
Okay, anyone else wanna comment on that? Because what I'm looking at proposing is we, we provide way with a three percent because of all the circumstances, which have nothing to do with his performance, but because of financial circumstances that we're dealing with, that we consider a recommendation of three percent.
The shared diversity and there will be hardships going forward.
Yes, there will be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Selena?
Yes, I have a question. So are you saying three percent for the village manager or three percent for all employees overall?
What we're saying is, looking at our, at past situations when, particularly when we were in a downturn, when revenues, we had a revenue challenge and expense challenges, we had put in place a three percent budget for merit increases across the board. And I think we're looking at that again. I think that's what we're gonna be facing as we go forward with our budget. For, so that, for that reason, I'm proposing a three percent merit for the manager for this fiscal year.
Okay, and that does not have, have anything to do with the cost of living increase that we have budgeted for staff moving forward, correct?
That's correct, Selena. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Jeff, you are?
So one of the considerations here is, at least for me, that we really, we haven't seen a budget, we haven't seen any numbers. I, I heard what you said, and in my mind, it makes sense that we, we look at some reduction. The only reason I might be a little apprehensive on what that number is is because I really, I really haven't seen a number or numbers that would provide a foundation for or basis for deciding that three is the right number, three point five, four is the right number. And that, that's my only concern at, at this point. I think heading in the direction of recognizing the reduction in revenues, the reduction in, in expenditures and activities and things of that nature, I, I think they're all valid reasons to consider a, a lower maximum number. But I'm not so sure about three percent at this point in time, so I'm interested to hear what others have to say.
You wanna comment on that, you wanna, Richard, Richard?
Well, I guess my comment is similar to Jeff's, and, you know, I, I agree, Ray, definitely. If three percent's the max, I, I would advocate for three percent on the max, but, you know, we've got uncertain times coming ahead, and even though I personally, I, I think it'd be unfair to not have Ray get at least three percent. But on the other side, our obligation is to the village taxpayers, and if we don't know what we don't know, and we don't know what the village is gonna be looking at in the future, my thought is, you know, I don't know, I know we've never done this since, since I've been here, I don't know why at this point it's necessary. I mean, I would definitely agree with three percent, however, at this time, I, I don't think that's a prudent course to go down until we know what the numbers are. And if a budget adjustment could be done, if things are looking good in the future, then absolutely, I would say, give the money. But at, at this point, it seems a little tough, especially when we might have extremely difficult decisions regarding, you know, employees down the line, spending the money at the time, and going on the path that we've been on without knowing what the fiscal situation's gonna be is, is a little difficult for me. I, it's hard for me to justify, you know, spending the money at, at this point.
Okay. What, what would your thoughts be if we said, you know, let's, I hate to use this term, but let's kick the can right now. When would we, when would be the absolute latest that we could make a decision about your merit increase in terms of timeline?
I, I don't have to, what's the, I have to go to Keith. He's, I have not read the contract. I, I think it, it does, it contemplates doing these together.
It, the contract contemplate says that the employer will consider the grant of the merit pay during the annual performance review. So the contract contemplates this, these things happening contemporaneously with each other, and the code requires you to do the review in accordance with the terms of the contract. So our interpretation is that tonight's the night.
Who's first?
Question for you, Keith. Can you hear me, Keith?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, so under the contract, as, as you understand it, if we say tonight, the, the amount of merit pay is zero, can we come back in six months and do a budget adjustment and give a, give him three percent? Are we prohibited under anything from doing that?
I mean, the contract, the compensation under the contract specifies the base pay, and it specifies this annual review and a, and consideration of merit pay, and a cost of living adjustment at the same amount, and at the same time provided to other management employees. So those are the only compensation provisions in the contract.
And does the council have the ability to adjust its budget to allocate more revenue to the village manager's pay? Or not pay, but to?
Council always has the, you are always in control of your budget, you can always, so, so yes, my answer to.
I, I will.
Budget amendments is, is yes.
Keith, I, I will add that the contract is consistent with state law in the sense that state law does not allow budgets. They allow merit increases associated with, with performance. It, it can't be, it's just that, it can't be arbitrary. It has to be tied to, to performance, and that's why these two are, are put together. Can it be at different times?
Yeah, those are, so, right, you can make budget amendments, but the contract has three specific provisions for compensation. The base pay, the cost of living, and this, and, and that is everything that the contract allows for.
Does, I don't think the news gets better between what I told you tonight.
I don't think it gets better either, yeah.
And September, September is when we do the reviews of the employees, and they get their merit increase. And right now, it is in the budget, even with the one and a half percent reduction, it is in the budget at, at zero to five. And when I say zero to five, so we budget three, three and a half, when I, when we say zero to three, we'll budget probably two. And then, and that's how the reviews are done, and it's earned.
So is it, is it, is it a requirement for us to actually have a number? I mean, could we make a statement about the village manager's performance being outstanding, therefore justifying a maximum merit pay lump sum award? And, and let that be a to-be-determined kind of a thing as a function of the budget process? Is that at all, is that at all possible?
What is required is that the council consider the grant of merit pay during the annual performance review. And any amount considered during this process does not increase base pay, but has to be paid in a lump sum check within thirty days from the date of the grant.
Okay.
So again, the contract contemplates the grant, if any, occurring in conjunction with the review and the payment occurring within thirty days.
Thirty days of the review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's Selena.
Yep, so if we wanna look at what three percent looks like compared to five percent merit pay looks like for the village manager, you're talking about thirty-five hundred dollars between the differences of the two.
All right.
So if we, yeah, so if you, if you, if that's what the discussion's about, is the monetary aspect of it, and over the past four years, I've always gone with it should be the average of what the other staff are getting, but when you do the math, it's a, it's a thirty-five hundred dollar difference. And there's still, the budget, in the budget is still the cost of living increase in addition to that.
All right, let me, let me pose a question to the council. Are we, can we agree, do we agree that if, if our budget for merit increases, let's, is, is set, let's say it was set at five percent, would we have any concern with granting five percent? If the answer is, we have no concern for that, the real issue then for us is, and this is the point that Richard has raised, is we don't know what that number really is. I'm projecting, I, I'm, I'm, I, based on past experience, I think we're looking at three percent, but that hasn't been officially presented to us to, to approve. So, can't we agree at least and say that what, that the actual payment will be deferred until we determine what the actual budget's gonna be, since we don't, we really don't know where that is? All right? All we know is it could be anywhere, the manager's saying anywhere between zero to five percent. All right? So, can we, if we can agree that whatever the max, that max number is, would be the number that would apply for, for his merit increase at a point in time when that is actually determined? Because that addresses your question. Whatever that number is, it is, so we're not making a decision in advance, that's, that's definitive in, in advance of knowing what the real number is. Once we know what the real number is, we're saying wherever that max is, we're agreeing that that's what we should, should give the manager in terms of his merit number.
So, I believe in our budget for our fiscal year is that it already included this portion? Is that correct?
Well, yes, it's in this year's budget because this, this performance was for the last twelve months.
Yeah.
So, it, it doesn't.
Right.
It's in this year's budget.
So, it's, it's already been budgeted for this fiscal year. We've had a downturn in the fact that we've had to adjust our budget this year because of the lack of funds coming in. So, I would, I would be fine with making a decision to base a percentage on what we feel comfortable with and go ahead and do it tonight.
I'm not, I'm confused.
She's saying it's in this year's budget, she'd be fine making a decision tonight. And, and, and I would too, and if three percent is, if three percent is it, that, I am very happy with that. I mean, it's, um.
Okay.
I, we did have, we have a shortfall in revenue of ten percent, ten percent of our, our revenues.
Yes.
That we know is a fact. You know, we're gonna, fortunately, we have a reduction, reduction of one and a half million in expenditures to date. I mean, so, but we're gonna, we're bringing you a tight, one of the tightest budgets we ever bought you. We're bringing, matter of fact, it's the first budget. Stan's been here twenty years. He said, when he gave it to me, with a negative, negative expenditure going forward. It's the first time he's ever done that.
Right. Richard?
Yeah, when I, again, when I hear the, the decrease in revenue, paying out more money just rings an alarm bell in my mind and it doesn't seem like a, a, a good idea, even though it's well deserved money. I mean, I, I don't dispute the fact about that, but I've definitely got a hard time with saying, okay, we're gonna spend more money on something that, you know, absolutely positively isn't necessary when, guess what? Heading down the line, there's gonna be a lot of things we're gonna have to look at and especially on the personnel side and I don't look forward to that. And, and at this point, I guess my point is to just, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of spending more money than necessary, even though Selena does raise a good point. Is it a whole lot of money? Is it a ton of money? No, it's, it's really not.
I'm not clear, when you say, what are you saying exactly? You, you're saying zero versus three?
What I'm saying is we, exactly, zero.
So, I would support a three percent. One, it's already in the budget. Two, while, while we can't give you, we, we're not feeling comfortable about giving you the five percent, I still feel like we need to recognize your efforts and we only have one village manager who's managing this village. And that reward is both for past performance and the future that you're gonna have to ride out through the next however many months. So, I would be in favor of a three percent.
Okay, so I'll go back to my original point of, I, I, that was my recommendation that we go with three percent. We've had some discussion, rationale, like I've, I've lived through this in past years where we, as I said, in that downturn, those downturn years, we had to make that kind of a tough decision and, in any event, so I am looking for a motion for three percent.
I make, I make a motion to award the village manager a three percent merit pay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
We have four yeses and, and one nay. So, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R seven was approved four to one.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Conversation and, and we, we, like Ray said, the story's not gonna get better going forward.
And just an aside, we do a lot of good work here and it is, I got a great staff, I got a great set of department heads that, that move this, this town forward. We have a lot of good things on the horizon. While this year, that active and connected is gonna be interrupted, the facilities and, and taking advantage of, of online services and, and making services more user friendly that way is our, is our goal for this next year and, and, and they're gonna work hard towards that end. And when we come out of this in, in a year, a year and a half, I think that the service end of what we do will, will be very much better and ahead. So, I gotta thank them for all their hard work in moving this forward too. Thank you.
Okay, before we close, I guess our next meeting is June eighteenth?
June eighteenth.
Next scheduled meeting. Things can change between now and then, but for now, we should plan on continuing with the virtual meeting, but certainly if the situation permits itself for us to move forward differently from there, we will, we will pivot and do that. There are no further questions tonight? Thank you all, appreciate it. We stand adjourned.